Good evening, welcome to our July 16th, 2024 City Council Meeting. It is 7:00 PM, meetings now in session. Before tonight's invocation, I would like to take a moment of silence for the victims of this weekend's tragic shooting, which took the life of Cory Comportor severely injured, David Dutch, James Copenhaven, and former President Trump, and traumatized our nation. So if we can all stand and take a moment of silence. Tonight's invocation will be led by Chaplain Kelly Dupay from the West Covina Police Department, and Councilwoman Lopez Viado will lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
Let's pray. Heavenly Father, we do thank you for the privilege of living in the great city of West Covina or working here in this great city. We thank you, Lord, for the privilege of living in the United States of America. And, Lord, we do just lift up those who were injured or the family of the man that was killed this last Saturday. So, Lord, we pray, God, for your comfort for those that were injured, Lord, we pray for speedy healing. And then, Lord, as well, God, that you would bring peace to our land, Lord, that we may disagree, but yet, Lord, let us do that peacefully and with respect and honoring one another and showing love towards one another as you would have us do. Lord, we pray for your blessing would be upon this council meeting tonight. We thank you, Lord, for those in this room that have stepped up to serve, Lord, to be council members and to lead our city into justice and the blessing and prosperity that you have for us. So, Lord, we thank you, God, for what you're going to do in this meeting. And while we're praying as well, Lord, we lift up every policeman and firefighter, police officer that's serving, Lord, that you would protect them and watch over them and keep them safe and use them, Lord, all of our police and fire personnel, Lord, to do your work in our community. Thank you, Lord, for your blessing upon our city. In Jesus' name, amen.
Please face the flag, put your right hand over your heart. Ready, begin.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic where it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Assistant City Clerk, roll call, please.
Good evening, Mayor. Councilman Kantoz.
Here.
Councilwoman Diaz.
Here.
Councilwoman Lopez Viado.
Present.
Mayor Pro Tem Wu.
Yep.
Mayor Calderon Tabatabai.
Present. City Attorney, is there anything to be reported out of closed session?
Nothing, Mr. Mayor, thank you.
Okay, and now to a very special recognition.
Testing.
Okay, so tonight, always bittersweet, but as a city, we definitely want to recognize. So if I can invite Maria Delida and Stephanie Sikama to the front. Yeah, let's cop it up, let's cop it up. The City Council takes great pleasure in recognizing Maria Delida for over 31 years with the city of West Covina, where she exemplified the highest values of public service. Maria began her full-time tenure with the city in 1993 as a clerk typist in the maintenance department. Since then, she was promoted to various positions, with the last being the city's purchasing manager, and has served in both the maintenance and finance department. She is set to retire August 1st, and again, 31 years of service to the community. You cannot have a successful city without the dedication of public servants that give their entire careers. And so, from the city, thank you, and I'd like to pass it to our Finance Director, Stephanie Sikama.
Thank you. I would just like to share that Maria is an absolute joy to work with, and we're definitely all gonna miss her. She's the one person that I can honestly say can tell you no with a smile on your face, and you will leave happy, not even realizing she told you no. She's so diligent in what she's done for the city and always looking for the best interest of the city and helping employees, and she's a great asset to our team, so she will be very missed. But we are excited for your next chapter in life.
And Maria, before I give you the mic, I definitely want to make sure that I read our resolution. City of West Covina Resolution of Commendation Presented to Maria Delida, whereas the City Council of the City of West Covina takes great pleasure in recognizing Maria Delida for over 31 years with the city, where she exemplified the highest values of public service, including professionalism, integrity, and the quality of service. And whereas Maria began her full-time tenure with the city of West Covina on July 16th, 1993, working as a clerk typist in the maintenance department, and whereas Maria promoted to various positions such as accountant clerk, secretary department administrative assistant, senior administrative assistant, and management analyst, whereas Maria worked in both the maintenance and finance department over the course of her tenure with the city, and whereas Maria has served as the city's purchasing manager in the finance department since December 2020, and whereas Maria submitted her retirement paperwork effective August 1st, 2024, and whereas Maria is well-liked and will be greatly missed by all, especially for her knowledge, commitment to excellence, willingness to always help others, and her devotion to the city of West Covina. Now, therefore, be it resolved by the City Council of the City of West Covina that Maria Delida is to be congratulated for her many years of excellent and dedicated community service to the residents of West Covina. Be it further resolved that the City Council joins with the official city family and the entire community in expressing its heartfelt gratitude and appreciation for the selfless dedication and service Maria has given to the city of West Covina as a member of the finance department. The City Council joins the staff and the community in wishing Maria Delida a full and enjoyable retirement today, July 16th, 2024. I want to hear about this retirement and what you have planned.
Thank you very much. It's been a joy working here all the years. I'm glad I got to meet all of you, work with you, and meet some of the citizens even. And it's been a pleasure, and I think the biggest thing I take with me are all the friends that I take with me and that even became family.
You know, I do see a lot of friends here. Can I invite the friends and family that came here to celebrate Maria to also come up? I mean, 31 years, I think this is the time, if you have some words to say. Yeah, would anyone like to say some things about Maria?
Why not? I'm their husband, and I know we're very pleased to be here now and to thank you for being such friends with Maria, a family, is what I said, it is a family, and she's living a family. She's not leaving you, but she's gonna call you and text you, she's gonna get together with you too, and maybe me too. Going to eat, yeah. So, thank you very much for everything, for treating my wife.
I'll just echo the same of Stephanie, I think we're just gonna miss your smile, not just, but like everything you do. And, yeah, it's been great, like getting to know you and having you as family here.
Anyone else? Okay, well, if we can get a big family photo, everyone. All right. Maria's way, and yes, I think, right, if you wanted something purchased, it was her way. Now for our City Manager's Report, which will be given by our City Manager, Paulina Morales.
Good evening, Mayor and fellow council members. Do we have it up? Perfect. I'll try to get through this quickly. So, as we started the fire season here in California, just wanted to provide and share some information. Our fire department has been going out and responding to mutual aid calls and so assisting, you know, throughout the state. So we've gone from Sequoia National Forest, Mariposa County, Los Padres Forest, Calameth National Forest, Kern County, and here in Los Angeles County. So we're helping our other firefighters within the state in addressing the fire season. So with that, we just wanted to remind our residents to update or to do hazardous reduction for their homes. So there's two zones, there's Zone 1, which is 0 to 30 feet. We encourage people to remove all dead plants, grass and weeds, or any vegetation, and then trim trees regularly to keep branches at a maximum of 10 feet away from chimneys. And then the second zone, Zone 2, is to cut or mow annual grasses down to a maximum height of four inches, create horizontal spacing between shrubs and trees, and create vertical spacing between grass, shrubs, and trees. And so this is just to help our residents make sure that as we are now in fire season, they can be cautious about their properties and ensure and protect their homes. Just as we are finished up our 4th of July event that I will go into in a little bit, just wanted to provide an update of our firework enforcement that we did from June to July. So approximately 4,000 pounds of fireworks were confiscated, both PD and fire worked collaboratively to enforce and had some task force within our community to address that. So as part of that, I said 4,000 pounds of fireworks were confiscated, there were 20 legal fireworks seized, and then we had six arrests and 10 citations throughout the month. So our staff was out there enforcing and making sure the community was safe. And to the more fun part, or the fun part of the 4th of July, we had our big 4th of July spectacular event. It went really well. We had thousands of people in attendance, and we had an 18-minute firework show. I heard that it was better than Disney as a fire show, but don't take my word for it, come out next year. We also had our third annual All-Star Friday Night Event at West Covina Sportsplex, and this is an annual event that we're starting to host, and I think our mayor did the first pitch, and I believe our Mayor Pro Tem was there as well, and attended a catch, so.
And I threw a strike, as always.
Oh, nice. On the agenda tonight, we do have an item number three, which is in regards to the hiring of a firm to do the design for the Fire Station 1 relocation. And so part of that, I just wanted to highlight that that's part of the city yard property that the city is looking to sell. And so part of that is relocation of Fire Station 1 that's currently located onsite in a temporary space, so that's what we're moving forward tonight. The second item would be the relocation of the city yard, and so we're looking at other feasible locations, and as well as looking at a public safety training facility, and I think we're looking for the city yard and the facility at nearby location on city-owned property. So we are moving forward with that. As we are now entering July, or in July, we have the Cleanup Saturdays, starting this Saturday, or sorry, next Saturday, July 27th. So if your regular service trash day is Monday, your Saturday pickup will be July 27th. If it's Tuesday, it's Saturday, August 3rd, and so on. And so this information is on the website if you want to confirm which day your Saturday cleanup day is. Acceptable trash, beds, mattresses, furniture, leaves, refrigerators, tree branches. Not acceptable trash items, household hazards, loose trash, rocks, concrete, electric waste, construction debris, or auto parts. We do have the West Covina Chamber Mixer, it's the first event for the chamber. It's Tuesday, July 23rd, from 5:30 to 7:30 at Tito's Bar and Grill. We hope to see our local small businesses there. As a reminder, August 6th, our next scheduled council meeting is canceled, and that'll go right into the next slide, which is a national night out. So that's what council and staff will be doing that Tuesday. We will be going out to the neighborhood community events with the kickoff event starting at Plaza, so we encourage all of our residents to join us for the kickoff event at Plaza West Covina at 4:00 PM. We also are now starting to sell tickets for State of the City. It's gonna be Thursday, September 12th, at the Sportsplex from 5:30 to 8:30 PM. We're also taking sponsorships for the event. Information for the event is on the city website. Just another reminder, the election is November 5th, nomination period has begun, it's begun as of Monday, and so any information that individuals want on the election, they can be found on the city website. And then the last slide, just a couple more events, summer concerts Wednesday, this coming Wednesday, and then next Wednesday will be the, I think, the last summer concert, so we encourage you. We do have on July 24th, it's gonna be a costume contest, which is new this year, and we're also doing the stamp program. So if you're collecting your stamps, make sure to come these last summer concert Wednesdays. Cool Kids of Summer has also kicked off, and so that alternates every Friday from different parks. For information on that, visit the website, State of the City, as I mentioned, Thursday, September 12th, and then the Second Annual Mega Moon Festival, Saturday, 21st to the 22nd, in the historic downtown. And that concludes my presentation.
All right, thank you, City Manager Morales. Let's now move on to oral communications. If anyone would like to address the council, please fill out an orange speaker card and submit it to the Assistant City Clerk. When you hear your name being called, please start lining up in the center row. The timer will start when you reach the podium. Requests to speak on agenda items will be heard prior to requests to speak on non-agenda items. Assistant City Clerk, how many speakers do we have tonight?
We have seven speakers, Mayor.
Okay, call the first speaker.
John Schumaker, followed by Ethan Joseph Morello, followed by Teresa Lee.
Hello, everybody. Last meeting, there was quite a controversy about the homeless shelter, and I do want to say one thing, that I actually agreed with Councilmember Rosario Diaz when she demanded, and rightfully so, a full financial accounting of the project, full, so we know what's going on there. Demanded, and that was a great thing to do. Only question I have is, why isn't the same demand made for the Health Department? Same demand made for Big League Dreams? No consistency there. We'd be off, we'd be better off financially if the same demand was made for all projects, just like the state comptroller or auditor, whichever one it is, said we should be doing for anything over $75,000. And I know with the Health Department, the comment is gonna be, well, the state hasn't told us what we can do. We went to the state and said we want to start a Health Department. How did we do that without having what a Health Department does and a full financial accounting of it? Why would you start something if you didn't do that? And going back, listening to some of the meetings, how it was talked about by different people on the city council, that this was going to be, you know, Covina wants to join us, you know, Baldwin Park, San Dimas, it just went on and on. It's gonna be, it's gonna be the San Gabriel Valley Health Department. I don't see any of them spending staff time and saying we want to do it. Not a one of them. Whittier put on one of their council agendas, $25,000 to evaluate it. Haven't seen that number come forward. What it looks like is the way things are handled financially in the city, and I will work to change that, or at least bring it to the attention when I'm on the council, is just because, everything's done that way. What it appears a majority does here is if they're for the project, we don't care what it's gonna cost. If they're against it, then we care. It's very obvious. It's very obvious. Things have to change, and oh, they will. First of all, Mr. Mayor, you can be assured that no member of my family will get up here and attack your mother, your wife, your father, your family heritage, or your job. And I can guarantee you, if one of them did, I will shut them up immediately, because there's no reason for them to say what they say to you. What it tells me is they don't have the courage to say it themselves, so they have somebody else do it. Because nobody has ever said, I disagree. I remember one time when a couple people, I can't remember exactly the person who did it, talked about Brian Gutierrez and the condition that he has that he talks about, that being appointed to the Planning Commission could cause some problems because of that. Mr. Wu had no problem ranting for 10 minutes about how dare they attack somebody who's disabled. She just brought up what he had said himself, had no problem saying that. You know, so things will change. I know people see the comments I make and how I can go about saying things, but there's a difference being on this side when you have five minutes versus somewhere else. So there will be a tone difference. It's going to stop the things that, we have a homeless plan since 2018. What have we been doing with it? Nothing. All I hear is, give us the money. Why would the county want to give this city a dime? A penny? Because you can't put a plan together that says how you're gonna spend it and how you're going to do it. Since 2016, since 2018, if we've had a homeless plan, this council has allowed hundreds of people who need help, they have just chose to ignore them, to do nothing. That needs to stop. Thank you.
Ethan Joseph Morello, followed by Teresa Lee, followed by Sherry Berlin.
Hi there, I'll keep this brief. I'm Ethan Joseph Murillo, I live here in West Covina. I stand before you today as a concerned resident of West Covina to address an issue that weighs heavily on our hearts. I would say most people, at least in some way, dealt with homelessness. While not being homeless yourselves, you may know a friend or a family member who has unfortunately been homeless. Homelessness is a crisis affecting the most vulnerable members of our society. As a community, we have a moral obligation to extend support and aid those in need. By addressing homelessness, we demonstrate our commitment to compassion, dignity, and respect for all people. Homelessness also poses significant public health, yeah, poses significant public health and safety concerns. Individuals experiencing homelessness are at a higher risk of health issues, which can lead to increased strain on our local healthcare facilities. Additionally, providing stable housing reduces the incidence of crime and improves overall public safety. Investing in solutions for homelessness can lead to long-term economic benefits. Programs that provide housing and support services reduce the costs associated with emergency services, law enforcement, and healthcare. Proactively addressing homelessness allows us to allocate our resources more efficiently and create a more sustainable community. A visible homeless population can also deter visitors and negatively impact local businesses. By addressing homelessness, we enhance the appeal of our city, attract more visitors, and support the growth of our local community. This in turn benefits all residents and contributes to a thriving community. Many cities and towns have successfully implemented strategies to reduce homelessness. For example, in Salt Lake City, Utah, they approach, sorry, this approach prioritizes providing permanent housing to individuals experiencing homelessness without preconditions. By addressing housing needs first, other issues such as employment, addiction, and mental health can be more effectively tackled. Salt Lake City saw a significant reduction in chronic homelessness by adopting this model. In San Francisco, the homeless outreach team uses a mobile approach to engage with homeless individuals directly on the streets, providing immediate access to medical care, shelter, and social services. This model has improved service delivery and outreach effectiveness. Houston has created a coordinated system involving nonprofit, local government, and private, sorry, local government and private businesses to provide comprehensive services. Through this collaborative effort, Houston has reduced its homeless population by over 50% in recent years. In conclusion, addressing homelessness is not only a moral and ethical imperative, but also a practical and strategic decision that will benefit our town in many innumerable ways. I urge the council to prioritize this issue, allocate necessary resources, and work collaboratively with community stakeholders to develop and implement a comprehensive plan to combat homelessness. Thank you.
Teresa Lee, followed by Sherry Berlin, followed by Winwin Zhang.
Thank you so much, Mayor, Councilmember, Mayor Pro Tem, thank you for the opportunity for me to be here today. My name's Teresa Lee, and I'm with TACF. TACF stands for Together Against Crime Foundation. But besides the five minutes, I would like to share with you that I was just mesmerized by the mayor, that he was able to read those fine prints on the resolution. I mean, either you have a perfect eyesight, or you just wing it as you go. But anyways, yeah, I'm here today, because we are actually, I'm located in Diamond Bar, but we're neighbors, we're all neighbors, and obviously, we all have something that we have concern with, and nowadays, it's the public safety. And obviously, I could share with the citizens here in this city that homelessness, all those are related together. So anyways, we had the opportunity to invite the District Attorney, George Gaskell, and the candidate for that same position, Nathan Hodgman, to attend a forum on the 21st of July, the Sunday, July 21st, from 2:00 to 4:00 PM, and the location will be at the AQMD And the location will be at the AQMD in Diamond Bar. So the location's here, printed on the flyer, so, and I'm here to extend the invitation to the mayor, the Mayor Porten, the council members, and also, hopefully, you could also help us to invite the citizens here in this city, whoever that's interested. And let's see that if we could resolve our crime issue. Thank you so much. Only two minutes.
Sheri Burlon, followed by Wenwen Zhang, followed by R. Robinson.
Good evening. My name is Sheri Burlon, and I'm here tonight to speak on the Pathways Home Initiative. The city of West Covina has never done anything to assist the homeless in the city. The numbers go up every year, as referenced by the dead body found in the front yard of my neighbor's house on Haven Brook Sunday morning. Yes, it was a homeless person. I totally was disgusted at the deploring, the deplorable meeting last time, with all the yelling and cursing going on. No one even cared that this council has a protocol and a decorum to withhold yourself and act decent in a decent public setting. I've written letters to all five of our city supervisors for the Pathway and the Pathway Initiative people with my deepest appreciation for their efforts and concern to bring the program to West Covina and help so many of our own and others. Also with apologies for the manner in which our people acted. They did not represent the city of West Covina. What surprised me most was listening to all the horror stories. As they were telling the stories, their stories was the reason we needed this program. And I kept hearing, not in that area, not in that area. Well, it just told me, it doesn't matter what area Pathway wanted to put it, you weren't going to say yes, and those people weren't going to say yes, no matter where in West Covina they put it, you don't want it in West Covina. The attitude disgusts me, and I'm sick of watching everyone post about the homeless, and this council is yelling, never going to happen. This is a very touchy subject, I admit. And I'm not asking, I'm demanding. I don't want any of the city council making my decisions for me of this matter. I want this on the next ballot. It should be elected by the people in this city, represented by all 105 people, not a selective few. Mr. Wu, to the letters to the supervisors, I also told them, all you kept saying was, give me the $2 to $4 million, and we're out, run our own program. There's no program, you know there was no program, and it was very deceptive. If they wanted to, and I also told them, if they want to look at our finances, look at the $20 million that was given to this city by the federal government for the stimulus that was sent on all city services and nothing to help our businesses. I mean, look at the three money pot businesses that you're running now. The Health Club, you can't call it a Health Department because it's not a Health Department, so it's just a club that we've dumped $1 million into. The Sportsplex, supposed to cost $753,068 next year, but with all the hoopla last week, did everyone miss that there's five new employees now at the Sportsplex? That bill for next year has now gone up to $1 million. And let's not even talk about the West Covina Chamber, because that's going to come in at a minimum of $228,000, a minimum of $228,000. And I also warned Mr. Wu and city staff to not call it a West Covina Chamber of Commerce. With that, the old chamber left a deficit of $305,647.98 in debt, of which $69,338.31 is owed to the state of California. You leave us open for the liability when you call it West Covina Chamber of Commerce, it's just West Covina's chamber. And Letty, your sarcastic remark about 68% was not good enough numbers for you. Come back in five years, was totally uncalled for and very unprofessional. Back in 1960, when John F. Kennedy said, we're going to the moon. What about when Christopher Columbus wanted to find the New World? They told him the world was flat and he'd fall off. Well, he proved them all wrong. And another thing, and the last thing, every time something comes up, you constantly compare West Covina to Los Angeles. We're not LA. So I don't care what LA does and does not do, I care what West Covina does. What's good for the other is not good for one. Quit comparing apples to oranges. And Mr. Wu, you stated at the last meeting that the mayor's position has no power. Well, if indeed that is true, then why did you, on your last mayorship, turn this chamber into a three-ring circus when you became mayor? And this program was a blessing in disguise to the homeless, and it was not going to cost us a dime. I am asking to put it on the next ballot and let us, the citizens, vote on it. I don't want you picking and choosing what is going to help this city when it comes to this issue. Thank you.
Wenwen Zhang, followed by R. Robinson, followed by Bill Elliott.
Good evening, Honorable Mayor, City Councilmembers, and Miss City Manager, staff, and the members of the community. I'm Wenwen Zhang, West Covina Library Manager. Well, first of all, I wanted, I'm so excited, I wanted to tell you that the library has reopened to the public with full service, and we reopened it for just a little bit more than a month, but the gate count, our average daily count, has reached to 600 already. And so, we are so happy to see so many people visiting the library, using the library. It's just great to see the library, you know, so many happy faces in the library. And while West Covina Library, we provide a variety of programs for all ages, babies, school age, and teens, and adults. And every Tuesday afternoon at 4 o'clock, we have a special program for teens, for teenagers. And so every Thursday morning, we have two programs for adults. One is stretch exercise for adults, begins at 11 o'clock, and then followed by a knitting club activities at 11:30 to 1 o'clock. So every Friday, not every Friday, but just normally just Fridays, we have story times. The baby story times begins at 10:15, and then the toddler, I mean, it's a toddler story time, but we call it a smarty pants story times, and it begins at 11 o'clock. And so during summer, like in July, because the summer discovery program, the schools out, and children's on vacation, so we have more programs for children. And on Wednesday afternoon at 2:00 p.m., see tomorrow is a Wednesday, and tomorrow afternoon at 2:00 o'clock, we have Let's Go Cars, that mood, for children's ages of 5 to 12. So for more information about the programs and services, and please visit the library or call the library, or visit the web, library website for details. If you have not been to the newly renovated libraries, please do, I bet you'll like it. Thank you so much for your, thank you for your time, and have a good evening.
R. Robinson, followed by Bill Elliott.
Contrary to what's just been said, the mayor really does have power, but it's essentially the same power as the other four councilmen. I got distracted, so. West Covina needs to establish a give, send, go to buy the Secret Service a few dozen drones to get Williamson and Kennedy Jr. and Trump some better security and protection so they can survive until November 5th. As it stands now, better security would be provided by the Boy Scouts of America. So the good news for the West Covina's Health Department, they need to know that RFK Jr. recently posted that six states, six state attorney generals, Texas, Idaho, Utah, Kansas, Mississippi, and Louisiana, are suing Pfizer for knowingly concealing the vaccine cause of myocarditis and pericarditis. And there is a suit filed on the Ninth Circuit, civil charges and conspiracy under the federal government under Operation Warp Speed, and also a lobbyist group called Bio is being sued. Now I'll switch topics to bird flu. That's another enhanced bioweapon. It's another eugenics exercise. Nothing new, I mean, we've been hearing this for years. But fear mongers in the news media won't tell the public that the cure for bird flu is an antibiotic called doxycycline and hydroxychloroquine, and that works great. So stay calm, and we're not all going to die, and you know, the biggest prize in October is going to be overrated. So skipping ahead. Anyway, I talked about the Ninth Circuit, and their recent decision said that COVID wasn't a vaccine, it's gene therapy, and I already mentioned the six attorney generals. So the feds are not being sued under Sarbanes-Oxley. Only Pfizer has the federal Warp Speed contract, hence the bioweapons angle. Pfizer lied because it caused, it caused, instead of being safe and effective, it caused myocarditis and pericarditis, failed pregnancies and death, because the spike protein nanoparticles are self-assembling devices, and they're not toxic. So the bird flu propaganda targets a wide audience, public health officials, international agencies, public policymakers, the pharma industry, scientists, researchers, and stakeholders in industries such as poultry production, livestock, food safety, and healthcare. With the emergence of a highly virulent strain of bird flu affecting both cattle and humans, it's important that we come together to discuss preparedness, response strategies, and the future implications of this evolving October situation. When the fall happens, that's the flu season. Internist and bioweapons expert, Dr. Merrill Nass, she's a doctor from Maine, describes the event as basically a trade show designed to fuel the biodefense industry. Nass said, because there's quite a big biodefense industry now, and you have to feed it, right now, the way to feed is with bird flu contracts, and that could be anything from selling nets for chickens to vaccines. Nass, two decades ago, there was a type of bird flu that killed roughly 60 people.
Thank you, Bill.
But the new strain is not as bad as that.
Thank you.
Okay. See you next time.
Bill Elliott.
Bill Elliott. The attempt to recall Tony Wu went down in flames. And the organizers are licking their wounds due to infighting and laziness that doomed their efforts. And Councilman Wu has emerged from the fray stronger and more resilient. Steve Bennett and John Shoemaker are poison. And anything that these two schleprocks are connected to turns into an immediate abject failure. They both have run for multiple elected offices in this city, including the school district, and they both have gone down in flames themselves. I'm surprised anyone is willing to associate themselves with either one of them. They exude hatred, resentment, condemnation. Neither one of them ever has anything good to say about the city, and these former enemies make very strange political bedfellows, to be sure. These two white Republicans and their associates targeted Tony Wu for a recall with racism in their hearts. The Chinese Disneyland remark resounds in my memory, and I'll never let them forget that. The lies that were told to people to get them to sign their petitions were shameful, and they blamed Tony for things that had nothing to do with him. Tony Wu is a good man. He works very hard for West Covina, he loves the city very much. He's a positive person, he's dedicated, and he's strong. He has the people of West Covina in the forefront of his mind, and we are very lucky to have him. This group of white Republican racists really missed their mark, because the person that they should have started a recall campaign against is Mayor Brian Tabataba, the communist. They would have likely been much more successful at recalling him. Brian has been horrible for West Covina and the First District, and he's on the wrong side of literally every issue. And with the help of Hillis Solis, he wants to import homeless drug addicts into our city at the Five Star Inn as a social experiment with dangerous repercussions for this community. Brian, what gives you the right to move in a group of homeless drug addicts from elsewhere between a legitimate hotel and a luxury car dealer that's family-owned and has been here for generations and is a great source of tax revenue for West Covina? What gives you the right to do that? Guests of the legitimate hotel and their customers of the car dealer shouldn't have to tolerate being intimidated by the people associated with that so-called Pathway home. What gives you the right? Why don't you open your home to a drug-addicted homeless person? Have you done that? Has Peggy Martinez done that? Has Angie Jillingham done that? Has she ever opened her million-dollar home to a drug-addicted homeless person? What about, what about, shut up? And what about, let's see, Commissioner Garcia, who disgracefully paraded her little child up here to this podium and advocated for a Pathway home? Has Sheri Bazillion over here done anything like that? No, she wants to spend tax money on that. Don't come ask her. The resounding answer is very likely, no. Why not lead by example? My wife and I have hosted a homeless person in our home for the last six months, and it hasn't been easy. There are employment and addiction issues, and frankly, it's been hell. What have you done? The owner of these businesses on each side of the Five Star Hotel have worked their whole lives to build their livelihood. And what have you ever built, Brian? What business have you ever started? You had the audacity to run on a platform or defunding our police department, and then when you had the opportunity, you voted against funding the replacement of 10 West Covina police officers. You're never going to get away from that, and I'm never going to let you forget that. And I'm not going to let the people of the First District forget that either. You literally voted to defund our police department when we're already understaffed. And our great independent West Covina Police Department deserves better. Before you ever completed the term that you're elected to by the people of the First District, you decided you wanted a promotion and ran a campaign for a state assembly, which you lost. Now you're up for reelection, but you said you don't even care if you get reelected. You're a disgrace, Brian. And you should resign tonight. Do the people of West Covina the honor of your resignation tonight. It's not going to get any better, Brian. You're the lone wolf on this city council, and you've accomplished nothing since you got elected, and you're not going to either. Resign.
Thank you.
No further speakers, slips, Mayor.
All right. City Manager Morales, would you like to respond to city, to public comment there?
Sure. Just real quick, I know some of the individuals came and spoke about the last Just real quick, I know some of the individuals came and spoke about the last meeting. I think they had the opportunity to say what was said last week, and they have the opportunity to come and voice their opinions this week. So, you know, everyone has that right. In regards to the chamber, we do, the city was very careful in when we formed the chamber for the city, understanding that there was a previous Chamber of Commerce for West Covina. So we have worked with our attorney's office to make sure that the new formation did not put us liable or subject to former debts from the previous Chamber of Commerce. And then I wanted to thank Winwin for always coming in and providing us updates. And that's a great news to hear that we're getting 600 visitors daily to the library now that it's reopened. So thank you for that update. That's really good news. And I think that concludes my responses.
All right. Let us move to the consent calendar. Council, is there anything you would like to pull from the consent calendar? Councilwoman Rosario Diaz?
I'd like to pull three.
All right. Anyone else? All right. Do I have a motion to approve the consent calendar items number one through five with the exception of number three?
So move.
Second?
I have a motion by Mayor Pro Tem Wu and a second by Councilwoman Lopez Viado to approve consent calendar items with the exception of number three.
Councilman Cantos?
Aye.
Councilwoman Diaz?
Aye.
Councilwoman Lopez Viado?
Aye.
Mayor Pro Tem Wu?
Aye.
Mayor Cadrón Tabatabai?
Aye.
Consent calendar is approved five zero, Mayor.
All right. Councilwoman Diaz, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mayor. I'd like to first thank the staff for bringing this up. I've been waiting, I'm sure we've all been waiting a long time for this. We're all excited to get a fire station, Fire Station One. And I'm sure our firefighters are waiting for that as well. So I just want to say thank you. One of the items or the issue I have is you went through several firms and you came up with some sort of a point system. And from that point system, you came up with this one contractor. And I did notice that this contractor is the same contractor that I believe prepared or built the training center in Carlsbad. Is that the one we went to go see?
Are they the same?
I don't believe they are.
Okay. Then never mind. I thought I read Carlsbad number six. So moving forward, I noticed that you went ahead and you have these proposals or this point item here, and but you only gave us one estimate, which is almost $800,000. My first question is, did they provide estimates for the other companies?
So I have Brian Cervantes of TransTech that will be able to help answer some of the questions. So for this particular project, we did a request for qualifications, which is slightly different than a request for proposals in the sense that the request for qualifications was to look at the vendors based on their past experience and their ability to build what we were looking for. Where a request for proposals is we would, you know, bid project, it would, we would have the specs of what we were looking for, and then they would have bid. So it was done a little bit in a different manner than a RFP. And so the process that we did at this, for this particular project is the TransTech, there's a committee, so TransTech with staff on the committee reviewed the submitted proposals and evaluated them based on the experience in constructing fire stations. That's what we're looking for, for this particular project. And then based on their qualifications, and they asked for the top three, they then got the cost estimates for those. And so that's why we only received cost estimates for three opposed to all of them.
Are they in here, the estimates, the other?
No, and we're trying to get the PowerPoint presentation up so that we could share that information with you.
Okay.
Oh, you have enough for all of them?
I'm gonna allow Mayor Pro Tem to have, are you still asking questions or?
Well, I'm waiting to see if they're gonna provide that. And I guess my last point will be is that I think it's really high. I had an issue with the cost, but then again, I don't have that experience. So I just wanted to know what the other estimates were. So that was my issue.
Yeah, of course. And I could go ahead and answer that while the PowerPoint is being pulled up. So we did, from the top three from the initial screening of the RFQ responses we received, one came in a little over 500,000, or yes, a little over 500,000. PPK came in just under 800,000. And the third, RRM, came in a little over 1,100,000. And as well to address that, we did look at other fire stations, which were, one is for the City of Ontario, which is currently in construction. The construction cost is estimated at $12 million, and the design for that was $750,000. And then another one was recently completed in Oceanside. The construction for that fire station was 18 million with 970,000 for design.
Councilwoman Diaz, you can continue.
Thank you. So I'm just wondering, when you, were you able to compare what the lowest bid, what they prepared or how they prepared it, if they were, I mean, were they that bad? I mean, are we comparing oranges with oranges? And do you know what I mean?
Correct. And to answer that, so with the RFQ, it's qualification based. So especially when it comes to a building such as like a fire department, which is going to be a lot more complex, we definitely want to take in the qualification of the firms into account. In terms of the lowest bid, which was, as I said, or the lowest fee, which was around 500,000, it isn't quite apples to apples. It's more of, because they included different line items. It's not the typical proposal you would see at council meetings where we give out exact line item specs. This one's more so based on the qualification of the firms, and then they provide their fee schedule based on what they think the project would cost in terms of the design And then on the slides, these are the breakdowns of the fees that we did receive for the top three based on the initial screening of the RFQs.
So for the preliminary design and design development, PPK actually comes at the lowest rate with construction documents and coming in the middle range. And so that would get us from the precise plan, which is in the planning phase, all the way to the documents that we would need to submit to building to get the project or the fire station built. And so then there's additional add-ons, which is the construction administration, and then the optional services that Brian can add more to.
Yes, I mean, Councilwoman Diaz, did you have more?
Well, I guess I just, I don't understand how one company can be so much different, so much lower compared to the, we're probably in the middle there, but I just, I don't understand that. I mean, what is the difference? And you're saying it's the qualifications and I guess the reputation, but do we care about that? I mean, I'm not sure.
In terms of pricing?
You just want to build it.
Yeah. On the screen here, so in terms of pricing, this shows the breakdowns for the construction documents administration. So as you'll see, there's different line items based on the firms. So that's kind of why I say it's not quite comparing apples to apples, because some firms provided, for example, final docs as an item, whereas another one did agency review and approval, but they didn't necessarily all include those. So that's why it's kind of difficult to say specifically one is cheaper in this aspect, whereas this one is more expensive in this aspect, because they're kind of different. Like I said, with the qualifications, the RFQ, the qualifications for this one, for especially for a fire station, we want to go with someone who had the similar experience. So for this firm, for example, they completed six projects, similar fire station projects within this timeframe of 2018 to 2023. Those priced for the actual construction is 5 million to 14 million, so they have experience in this type of design and know with other cities they've worked with, kind of what works, what doesn't work, new technologies, new ways to go about building it. So that's kind of where the difference comes in as well. And that was discussed during the interview process with staff when the three top firms were interviewed.
Okay. I still have a problem with that, so I don't know how the rest feels, but I'll let somebody else talk about it.
Mayor Pro Tem Wu, you have the floor?
Okay, and I will concur with Councilwoman Diaz, okay, about the price, okay? And I think this is almost like more than a million dollar, 1.1 million dollars, okay, to do a design for warehouse, okay, fire station with a two story condo grade, because this is a fire station, this is not a luxury home, okay? And with warehouse, meaning you can put the engine inside, okay? To design this with almost, okay, the same with Ontario, the Oceanside, San Bernardino, they'll build in the fire station, this already have set right there. So how can it cause a 1.1? I have a major problem with this. Okay, I think, I think we need to, okay, and check with Ontario, okay, their architect, okay? And it's taxpayers' money, okay? I think this is something, okay, even we have a budget for 1.499, but still, we want to save every dime because the money we want to go to the construction, okay? And I think Ontario with 1.2 million dollar, hopefully, we can control the construction with 10, around 10 million dollars, well than 12 million dollars. So the architect, okay, was a very famous firm, okay, with a very pricey tag, okay? I think this, I have a same problem too, okay? I think, okay, we sell this property, City Yard, we want to use this money 100% going to the station number one, City Yard, and the police and fire training facility. So meaning every dime count, we want to spend into the construction. And what we beginning, you already spent 1.1 million dollars just for the design. Okay, I think the issue I have is, I think we should bring it back, okay, to have somebody much more reasonable price, maybe check with Ontario, Oceanside, or some other, okay, and city, they're using a reputable company, and they do it, okay? Because after this, then you have to, I have a people construction company to do construction, okay? And how long it's going to finish? We want to hit any obstacle with any potential, like we're dragging over there, okay, taking forever. We want to in and out and get our fire station so we can move the people from their trailer into our shining armor in West Covina in this corner. So I will concur, I think we should bring it back, okay, have relooking to the pricing, okay? And to come back to us with a much more reasonable design architecture fee. That's why we're going to pay for it. This is my suggestion.
Councilman Cantos?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Was this chart provided in the packet? The specific chart that has the comparison to the three?
Councilman Cantos, the chart that's on the PowerPoint, it was not.
Okay. So this is a problem, because I don't have an opportunity to see and review this without them literally reading this to, you know, taking counsel time to read this. This should have been provided in a more timely way. It's irresponsible of me to vote for something that I can't even read, and that wasn't given to me ahead of time for me to look at this. If I were simply to vote for or against it, it would be irresponsible, because I don't have the opportunity to review what you're reading there, unless you literally took up counsel time to read the entire chart, which is not the best use of time here. So I'd really admonish our staff to make sure, from a timeliness standpoint, that they need to be ready and to give all of us equal time to review all of the materials and not just simply to present things here. Because if I were to approve or vote for or against this, it would literally be an exercise in my not doing my due diligence. I read everything that's given to me, and when I don't have the same access, it's literally, it's an accessibility issue, and it's also provides, it does not allow me the same opportunity to review the same material that all of you, the rest of you can look at. So that's, that's a concern. But then, besides that, I also am in agreement with my colleagues with regard to the costs. I mean, with, I understand that you've decided to go for the process of an RFQ versus an RFP, but the other thing is I am worried about the costs at the level that they are is, I mean, we should, of course, make sure that we have fire station design be not only a good, but it needs to be something that's quality, but at the same time, we also need to be very careful with how we spend taxpayer dollars. I mean, people work very hard in this community, and their taxes go to funding various things, and I worry about the price tag being what it is. So I just wanted to express that.
Yeah, so I just had a question and then a comment. Of the parameters that were not included in pricing, is there, is there any that are like red flags that if they don't include a cost? Because I know it wasn't apples to apples, right? Because they didn't all include the same cost, so you're gonna get a different end number. So as counsel, are there any red flags for us that one firm didn't provide a certain cost? And, you know, if you were to go with that firm, then all of a sudden it comes back with, ooh, a real big number. So was there anything in that that kind of set a warning for you to not go with one firm versus the other?
So in terms of costs, there were some items that were included, some more so were optional items. As far as the qualifications, I was actually involved in the interview process, so I'll defer to our senior engineer, Maria Fraser. She was more so involved in the qualification. Yeah, so with one, one of the architects who did submit, it is a single architect overseeing it with subs beneath them, in comparison, the other ones are full architecture firms. So that is one difference.
Okay. And the firm that relies on sub, which firm was that?
That's going to be Rubio Medina Architect.
Okay, and that was the lowest?
Correct.
The bids? Okay. Can you explain what's the concern with using subs versus being a full firm?
Of course. So with one person architect, the concern might be that if they're sick, if they have a family emergency, things like that, the project kind of comes to a standstill. In comparison, when you have a full firm, if the person you've been working with, for whatever reasons, unable to do it, you still have the full firm supporting them, that's aware of the project. So with a one, one man show, so to speak, it tends to be a little bit harder if there's unforeseen circumstances, since they are acting as the project manager in terms of the design. Again, in comparison to a full architecture firm, you have multiple people to work with in the case something does arise.
Okay. And then can you just, once again, speak on, for a fire station, why the qualifications is something that the city really wanted to make sure that we really looked at their previous experiences with a project like a fire station? What is it about fire stations that make it different than, than other kind of builds?
Yeah, of course. So the, one of the big ones would be modern technology. So when people have worked in similar types of structures, they understand the needs, especially with a fire station where we have staff living in the facility. A more experienced architect in terms of fire stations might have insight that someone who doesn't normally practice that would have. So again, especially with the living facility, the firm that we did recommend has done projects for City of Newport Beach, City of Orange, City of Ontario, City of Monterey Park, City of Escondido, City of Van Nuys, City of Costa Mesa, and City of Dana Point, all for fire space, eh, fire stations specifically. So when you have that experience with it, you're naturally going to have better insight as to what the needs are of the staff working there, and are going to be able to identify things more so than city staff might not necessarily know, since it's not a common project we do often.
Okay. Thank you. So if someone would like to?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes?
I'd like to postpone this, this item until, in following the suggestion of the Mayor Pro Tem with regard to coming back with, with a greater justification in accordance with what he has suggested, which I am in full agreement with, I move that we postpone this matter for future consideration and to give me more time to review it with full materials available. But I'd like to move postponement of this matter to another meeting.
We have a motion and a second.
Can I say something really quick?
Mayor Pro Tem Wu?
Yeah, okay, you have a second. I want to see, you're talking about Ontario's building right now for 1.10 million dollars and the architectural design is about 700,000 dollars. So maybe you can check with their firm, okay, and what company they use, okay, how reputable they are, including their, including our, okay, and the bid. So in that way, we have experience, okay, they are, they are building right now, and how they're building, and who is their contractor, okay? We all put it together, so we're using some people with a desirable budget, okay? Otherwise, budget can go to the roof, and everything can go to a roof, because they just, okay, slide, it's government, they just come inside and try to just, okay, slide this government, they just come inside and try to get a big fat meat. But no, I think if I see the council over here, we want to save every dime, because we have a big project going on, we want to save everything. So, so I want to make sure you can do a comparison, apple to apple, and bring it to us, and then we can approve next time with the right firm with the right price.
Okay, yes, before I roll call, Councilwoman Diaz?
I'm sorry, I just wanted to verify, these were all, they all build fire stations, right?
Correct, yeah. The firms did, they have varying amount of experience in terms of how many they've done and things of that nature, but they, I, yeah, so they did all work on fire stations.
So at the end of the day, we would have received an architectural design for a fire station?
Correct, yes.
Okay, thank you.
City manager, did you want to add?
One of the things that I just wanted to re, mention is, as Brian was mentioning, each one, it was not apples to oranges, because some of the firms included additional services as, I don't know if you could see the spreadsheet up there, but, for example, bidding and award contract support, construction administration, geotechnical report, environmental planning. So those are things that will be needed for the project, that are not included in the lowest bid. So that would be additional costs that would be part of the project at one point or the other, and if it's sub, we would have to sub out through that architect.
Mayor Pro Tem Wu?
Thank you, Mayor. So it's very simple, then give them a scorecard, give them what the requirement, this is what we want you to do, then you're apple to apple, it's easy. Okay, so that's it, okay? So you don't give them, everybody have a freedom to choose, okay, so the price would be different. Give them this, the scorecard, this is what we want, okay, how much each one end up, by total, how much, okay? And then, at the same time, the contractor, okay, and what, and how much the budget to build this thing. We don't want to touch my hole, we want something that is a fire station, okay, and that would be functional, and they have so many fire stations building in California right now, we can use in some example, okay, and what, the one would be perfect in this area, okay, and this location, and easy on or off on the freeway to save life. I think that is the most important thing we want to see, okay? So I think this is what we agree, five of us agree upon. Okay, thank you.
Just to be clear, they did receive the, they knew what the evaluation criteria was going to be for, for the scoring when they submitted, correct?
Yeah, that was outlined on the RFQ.
Okay, thank you. Okay, roll, roll call?
I have a motion by Councilman Kontos to postpone this item with regards to the suggestions that our mayor Pro Tem suggested, and to provide full information back to the council. And I have a second by council, excuse me, by Mayor Pro Tem Wu. And this is for consent calendar item number three, consideration of agreement with PBK Architects, Inc. for design services for the new fire station one, project 23022. Councilman Kontos?
Aye.
Councilwoman Diaz?
Aye.
Councilwoman Lopez Viado?
Aye, but I also would like to, a copy of that RFQ, please, thank you.
Mayor Pro Tem Wu?
Aye.
Mayor Calderon Tabataba?
Aye.
Item passes 5-0 with the new recommendation.
Yeah, I, I think Councilman Kontos brings up a, a great point. We definitely need to have all the information before the meetings. All right, moving on. Here we go. Item number six, West Covina Sewer Service Charge. This matter set for public hearing is for authorizing the collection of the annual sewer service charge through the county tax bill. Will the city clerk verify the proper legal notice has been given?
Proper legal notice has been given, Mayor.
At this time, I shall open the public hearing on the West Covina Citywide Sewer Service Charge. There will be the presentation of this, there will first be the presentation of the staff report, then we shall hear comments from the public. Ms. Morales, who will present the staff report?
Joanne Burns, the deputy community development director, will be providing the presentation this evening.
Good evening, Honorable Mayor, members of the city council. State law requires a resolution be adopted at a public hearing on proposed rates and method of collection of the citywide sewer, sewer service surcharge on the annual property tax bill. For fiscal year 2020, I'm sorry, 24, 25, the rate is proposed to remain the same at $82.02 per unit. The, the overall assessment that would be collected would total $3,857,024. In the preliminary operating budget approved for, for sewer services is 4,000, I'm sorry, 4, 4, 4, 4, 4, 4, 4, 4, 4, 4, 4, 4, 4, 4, 4, 4, 4, 4, 4, 4, 4, 4, 4, 4, 4, 4, 4, 4, 4, 4, 4, 4, 4, 4, 4, 4, 4, 4, 4, 4, 4, 4, 4, 4, 4, 4, 4, 4, 4, 4, 4, 4, 4, 4, 4, 4, 4, 4, 4, 4, 4, 4, 4, 4, 4, 4, 4, 4, 4, 4, 4, 4, 4, 4, 4, 4, 4, 4, 4, 4, 4, 4, 4, 4, on the projector is the fiscal year 2024, 2025 sewer capital improvement projects. These projects include the, what was approved with the fiscal year budget, including CIPP lining program, sewer system controls and power, the lift station at Quail Valley, sewer master plan update, closed circuit TV inspections, and sewer main replacement areas. The total budget is $2,078,400 with a total projected budget, project budget of 2.5 million. With this, it is recommended that the public hearing be conducted, and that the city council adopt the resolution approving the sewer service charges to be collected on this fiscal year's tax roll. We do have a representative of Well Dad who prepared the report available for questions.
Okay, are there any questions, council? Seeing none. Madam City Clerk, have you received any written protests, objections, or comments concerning the West Covina Citywide Sewer Service Charge?
I have not, Mayor.
Just, Mr. Robinson, just.
Sewer service and the water service are similar, I mean, the infrastructure. And this county sanitation district, the rates are the same, but you ought to notify the district, or I think probably one of you are on the sand district, you attend their monthly meetings, I don't know which one, but, okay. But, yeah, that's a perk, they get a, a good, nice fee for attending that meeting every month. But this, the, I mean, Brian, since you're on that seat, make sure that they're, they're not increasing our rate, but make sure that they're, I think there's automatic equipment that they can check the infrastructure for leaks, because as, as the, the system ages, make sure they're doing their due diligence to guard the integrity and, and fix, fix the problems in West, West Covina, there may, there may be links, leaks, and it's off topic, but the same thing goes for the water company, sewer company and the water
Thank you. Is there anyone else? No? Okay. Is there anyone present who, okay, we've done that. I shall now close the public comment portion of this hearing and ask for any council discussion or a motion.
Move the motion to approve the agenda number six, please.
Second.
We could get a roll call vote?
I have a motion by Mayor Pro Tem Wu, and a second by Councilwoman Diaz. Councilman Kontos?
Aye.
Councilwoman Diaz?
Aye.
Councilwoman Lopez Viado?
Aye.
Mayor Pro Tem Wu?
Aye.
Mayor Calderon Tabataba?
Aye.
Item number six, passes 5-0, Mayor.
Moving to item number seven, West Covina Citywide Lighting and Maintenance District. This matter set for public hearing is for the West Covina Citywide Lighting and Maintenance District. Will the city clerk verify the proper legal notice has been given?
Proper legal notice has been given, Mayor.
At this time, I shall open the public hearing on the West Covina Citywide Lighting and Maintenance District. There will first be the presentation of the staff report, and we shall hear comments from the public. Ms. Morales, who will present the staff report?
Joanne Burns, the deputy director for community development, will be providing the presentation.
Thank you. The funds collected for the citywide lighting and maintenance district are used to pay for services designated as special benefits, such as the operations and maintenance of street lights, tree trimming, removal, replacement of diseased trees, repair, replacement of light standards in hardscape or sidewalk repairs. The, the voter provision allowed for an increase based on the consumer price index, but for, by not more than 2%. The CIP for the Los Angeles, Long Beach, Anaheim area, between March 2023 and March 2024 was at 4.03%. So the, the total, the total 2% increase would result in a $1.15 difference between the previous fiscal years' assessment and this, this fiscal year's assessment. With that stat, it is recommended that the city council adopt, conduct a public hearing and adopt the resolution confirming the diagram and assessment for the citywide lighting and maintenance district for fiscal year 2024, 22, 25. I'm, I'm available to answer if the city council has any questions. We also have the Well Dad representative that prepared the engineering report present to answer any questions as well.
Council, is there any questions for staff? Seeing none. Madam City Clerk, have you received any written protests, objections, or comments concerning the West Covina Citywide Lighting and Maintenance District?
I have not, Mayor.
All right. I shall now close the public comment portion of this hearing and ask for any council discussion or a motion.
I'll motion to approve.
I have a motion by Councilwoman Diaz, with a second by Councilwoman Lopez Viado to approve consent, excuse me, public hearing item number seven. Councilman Kontos?
Aye.
Councilwoman Diaz?
Aye.
Councilwoman Lopez Viado?
Aye.
Mayor Pro Tem Wu?
Aye.
Mayor Calderon Tabataba?
Aye.
Item passes 5-0, Mayor.
Item number eight, West Covina Sewer Service Charge. This matter set for public hearing, oh, no, this is, oh, typo, that's okay, no, no worries, no worries.
My apologies.
This is what happens when you, when you're just, when you're reading off the script. Item number eight.
Item number eight, Mayor, is consideration of award of bid and a, whoa, I can't read this evening. Number eight is a public hearing regarding fiscal year 24, 25 assessment for West Covina Landscape Maintenance Districts.
Four, six, and seven, yes. This matter set for public hearing is for the setting of the assessment rates for the West Covina Landscape Maintenance District, number four, six, and seven. Will the city clerk verify the proper legal notice has been given?
Proper legal notice has been given, Mayor.
At this time, I shall open the public hearing on the West Covina Landscape Maintenance District, numbers four, six, and seven, fiscal year 2024, 2025. There will first be the presentation of the staff report, then we shall hear comments from the public. Ms. Morales, who will present the staff report?
Joanne Burns, the deputy community development director, will be providing the presentation.
Good evening again. State law requires a public hearing be conducted annually to, to levy and collect special assessments. The districts were created at the request of the developer in lieu of forming a homeowners' association. The funds collected are used to maintain existing landscaping, install planting or landscaping, construction of public lighting facilities, removal of rubbish and debris and solid waste, and also graffiti removal. The districts four, six, and seven are mainly located in the southern, in southeastern portion of the city of West Covina, as shown on the map. LMD four is, is located in the southern portion of West Covina, along Azusa Avenue, near Amor, in areas between Shadow Oak and Nogales Street, and a portion of La Puente Road in LMD six is located on the west side of Rand Avenue, properties south of Heritage, in properties south of Heritage Park, while LMD seven is located, our properties along the north side of the Walnut City, West Covina Walnut City border, east of the Galveston The city hasn't, is undergoing a number of projects to address existing maintenance within the landscape management district. And some of, some of these improvements have already, already being done. One of these are the increased scope of landscaping along the hillside areas. Previously, it was only to, the, previously, it was only to maintain a portion of the landscape area, but now the new scope will maintain shrub and plants up to four feet in height. And a before and after picture is on the projector. The, the bare ground area along, we, the city, the, the plan is to allow landscaping, once it's removed, to allow it to fill in and grow, and then if necessary, city staff will go ahead and install additional landscaping to fill in the spaces. Per the city's maintenance superintendent, the, the, this type of landscaping maintenance is currently approximately 40% complete. On the projector are, is, is another scope, which would, which involves removal of encampments and trash involved with that. The city has removed a total of six 40-yard bins of trash last year within the hillside. As far as assessment rates and the budget is concerned, there is no change that's being proposed for, for the, the assessments. And it will, and it will remain the same. So for, for, for district four, the rates, the, the $348.02 is per residential unit, and then the, the higher rate would be for, per duplex. And for six, it's just per parcel, and then for seven, it would be, the difference is between developed parcels and undeveloped parcels. And the CIP projects for fiscal year 2024, 22, 25, again, involves a replacement of hardscape, repair and replacement of light standards, conversion of existing fixtures to LED fixtures, and the comprehensive removal and replacement. And the, the, the budget for that is 275,000 for four, 110,000 for six and seven. When, a couple of the city's goals in regards to the landscape maintenance district is to prevent, for preventative maintenance of all LMDs. The city so far has removed 480 high-risk trees, has, in, in relation to this, and has also installed doggy bags that have been placed along the passeos. The current reserves and assessments are sufficient to cover the services until fiscal year to cover the services until fiscal year 26, 27. Staff is recommending that a reevaluation on the assessment rates should be done to continue with the additional services that are planned for the future, including the trees that are going to be placed on the five-year tree trimming cycle and also proactive approach for sidewalk maintenance. With this, it is recommended that the public hearing be opened and the City Council adopt resolutions for confirming a diagram and assessment for fiscal year 2024, 2025 for Landscape Maintenance Districts four, six, and seven.
If I could.
Yeah, City Manager?
If I could add to the presentation. So, something that we've been working on in four, six, and seven, as well as one and two, but we're here discussing four, six, and seven tonight, is the deferred maintenance that has been deferred for many years. And so, one of the biggest things that we were able to do is, we started with the landscaping, as Joanne had mentioned. Previously, it was four feet from the property line, and everything in the middle of the hillside was left, it was not maintained. And so, that also kind of led to areas that were allowing for encampments to occur. And so, this past year, I don't know if anyone has gotten a chance to go to Woodgrove Park or Shakespeare or Shadow Oak Park. We've done already, we've cleaned up those park areas, and we're working, the contractors working their way down to Azusa Avenue to really address, you know, landscaping that hasn't been maintained in many years. So, while that's happening, as Joanne mentioned as well, there's been a lot of trees. The Landscape Maintenance Districts have been responsive to the needs of addressing trees. And so, we've been doing that through the last couple of years. To look forward, we want to get the trees on a tree trimming cycle. So, we're adding them to, we're adding the trees to tree trimming cycle in this year without increasing the assessments. And so, the increase in landscaping services, the addition of the tree trimming, those are additional costs that we are using the reserves right now to cover. And so, as Joanne mentioned, that's going to be limited. And it'll be, we'll be able to do that until fiscal year 26, 27. And so, to maintain the work that we're doing, the cleanup that's happening, beyond that, we're going to have to come back and look and evaluate the assessments there. But it's, we're trying to, like I said, to address some of those deferred issues, maintenance in the Landscape Maintenance District. One of the things, too, is the sidewalk repairs. So, we already have a quote from a vendor. We're going to be getting them on board. And then hopefully, by the end of the year, having that updated. We're also working on a quote to get some of those, the lighting and the paseos done. So, we are actively working towards just addressing some long-time deferred maintenance. That's it. Thank you.
Any questions of staff, by council members? Councilman Contos?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. To what extent, to Director Burns, to what extent have we factored in the netting under the soil in order to prevent weed regrowth? I brought this up with staff previously, but I'm just wondering if you could describe that? And the second question is, you said that 40% of the project that you described earlier was done. When will the remaining 60% be done? And the third and final question is, with the tree schedule, with planned tree trimming and maintenance, is that also going to be posted online, as we've asked for previously, for people to be able to know what the status is of those? Thank you.
I can answer some of that. So, I'll start backwards. So, the current trees right now, part of the citywide, are on the website, on the GIS map, that you can see when they're going to be trimmed and their condition. So, once we get the trees on a tree trimming cycle in the LMDs, we can add them to the GIS map on the city website. So, we can definitely do that. The contract for the new scope of landscaping was a year and a half to get all of the LMDs up to the new scope of maintenance. So, I believe we are roughly around six months in. So, we have approximately a year left on that project. And then I think the first item was the netting on the trees. I know that you had mentioned that before, and we have relayed that to the landscaper. So, I will get back to you on that one, on that item.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I have one other question I forgot to ask with my three.
You still have the floor.
Okay. The other question is regarding the pressure washing of walls, walls along the Amor corridor and other places. I know I brought that up with staff as well. Is that factored into the maintenance and restoration of those areas that have been neglected?
You're talking about the walls along Azusa Avenue?
Yes, along Azusa Avenue and Amor, and, you know, those walls that are just along the different main corridors.
So, along Azusa Avenue, I think the majority of that is not within the LMDs. A lot of that along Azusa is the actual hillsides that gets cleaned up as part of this. There are walls along, I think it's Amor and District four. So, that would be, if there's graffiti, we can use that to maintain those.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Yes. All right. Madam City Clerk, have you received any written protests, objections, or comments concerning the levying and collection of assessments within the West Covina Landscape Maintenance Districts, number four, six, and seven?
I have not, Mayor, but I believe we have one speaker.
All right.
One question, a question for the staffer, maybe Will Dan. I might live in LMD Landscape Maintenance District four, or maybe I live west of District four. I'm not sure. It's Luisa Avenue. But there's, there's eight landscape, light standards on my street. And in the last two weeks, they've dug these deep holes adjacent to all those light standards. And it mentioned replacement of light standards. And I was wondering, is what's going on in my street? The replacement of, they're 70 years old, I believe. They're gonna, they're gonna, there are eight of them, and they're gonna replace them with a light standard. I guess they're gonna put new lights. Is that this program, or is that some other West Covina program? That's for Will Dan or the?
City Manager, could you?
No, that's my question.
Yes, I was getting the information, but it is.
The light standards.
I believe it's Southern California Edison replacing the lights throughout the city. So, it's not city project. Southern California Edison.
Any other? I shall now close the public comment portion of this hearing and ask for a council discussion or a motion.
I motion to approve.
Question. I know my back hurt like hell, but I still cannot stop asking question. But really quick, I think there's something, all this extremely overgrown, okay? All this vegetation and the tree, dead tree, big tree. And it's really, okay, okay, as a major issue to our resident on all these districts, number four, number six, number seven, on the Amors, on the Shadow Oak, and the hillside. And especially Shadow Oak, okay? The tree going to people's roof, okay? And the eucalyptus tree, and so huge, okay? And, and then we see complaint all the time. But I think with this program, it's fire cycle, or we can do emergency trimming to make sure those tree not going to encourage to, our city tree going to their home, okay? And can you address this issue? Because if a fire is possible, it's not going to make in time for those tree to damage people's roof, or maybe hurt people, okay? This and that. So, so can we decide we doing all this? Okay, I think great job. Because a lot of residents told me, for 30, 40 years, the city hasn't done anything for those area. And they pay extra, okay, LMD fee, like a homeowner association. But, okay, previous city never done. But finally, we didn't kick the can down to the road. With this administration, we starting fixing everything. So, I want to thank the city really addressed this issue to keep all this extremely, okay, and overgrown vegetation to be cleaned up and to make sure all this paseo, the light, LED, and to make sure they be proud living in the area. The area is beautiful. It just need maintenance, okay? I think, I think, okay, and Councilman Conto and agree with, well, we almost in the same area, number four and number five. We jason together and see, I think this issue people really want to know. And the big tree is a major issue. And I'm glad now shortened to five years. But my question will be, how about those big overgrown tree in people's backyard belong to the city? Let grow into their roof. How you address, city address all those tree? How can we with LMD to make sure this thing can be addressed?
Yeah, we have been addressing them. I think Joanne mentioned a number above 400 that have already been addressed. We will continue to address critical trees as needed and be responsive. So, the goal is with this tree trimming cycle that we're no longer going to have those critical trees. But we are trying to address those critical trees and get them taken care of.
Have our tree trimming contractor or Will Dan address any big tree that should be kind of potentially problematic? Let the city or our contractor or our emergency tree trimming company can address those potential issue? Again, those trees are major liability to the city.
Yeah, I believe there's, we've been dwindling away at the number. So, the number of critical trees that we have left are, you know, I think under 50. And we will continue to address them as we move forward.
Would you please? Okay, and because some of the dead trees, dead tree, dead over there for a long time. And there's potentially hazardous and plus is fire hazard, too. And another thing, I think people really want to know when, I receiving call the time, email, okay, regarding when their area, their hill would be trimmed. They say, oh, cross street have been trimmed. When they will be their turn? So, maybe you can talk to the merchants, our contractor clean up, still have 12 months to go. So, we can address to them when would be the next target area? So, we post on the West Covina, our West Covina city site, so people can go check, based on their schedule, when we're going to, okay, their area. So, in that way, people have in peace about it will come. It's just matter of time.
We can, we can work on providing that information.
Would you please? Information, I think is what people want.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you so much.
We have a motion on the floor, and I will second.
I have a motion by Councilwoman Lopez Viado, a second by Mayor Calderon Tabatzai. Councilman Contos.
Aye.
Councilwoman Diaz.
Aye.
Councilwoman Lopez Viado.
Aye.
Mayor Pro Tem Wu.
Aye.
Mayor Calderon Tabatzai.
Aye.
Item passes 5-0, Mayor.
Okay, moving on to City Council reports, AB 1234 Conference and Meeting Reports. Any? Moving on to City Council requests.
I have a request. I go first. I'm really quick, okay?
Mayor Pro Tem Wu.
Thank you, Mayor. Okay, it's impossible, yes. Yeah, I'm the slow, I'm the slow one, okay? But really quick, okay? And last time, on last meeting, we talked about West Covina Homeless Initiative, okay? And I remember we approved this back in 2019. And then we even have a meeting we approve. It's consolidate all West Covina nonprofit, okay, agency, including the churches, including the nonprofit mental health, okay? And consolidate. And I remember that times Assistant City Manager Mark Prisco, okay? He said he's going to organize, okay? We give them the direction already. But later on, okay, he left the city and plus we hit the pandemic. So, I request to reactivate our West Covina Homeless Initiative. Okay, this time, I received Covina Valley Unified School District. They want to join to participate. They have the result and this and that, and the other churches, okay? They want to participate. And I want to add with West Covina Health to participate because the homeless issue is not a social issue. It's a medical issue, okay? Because the drug, alcohol, mental health, we need the medical, okay, their help. Hopefully, we have the group of nonprofit won step in. So, we want to organize all these resource become, again, rather than fighting each other independently, we consolidate, okay, all the resource together and to help all these homeless, okay, and the population in our city, okay? And last time, we have a meeting with Letty Lopez Viado and with Carpentry and All-in-One. We have a very successful meeting regarding they really help, okay? A lot, okay, few, okay, and homeless people off the street. So, so this is my request to reactivate and then bring back to council have a presentation. Another thing is, at the same time, send to the county to request, okay? And they say they want to review our plan. Send them to our plan and request. If last time we stopped because we don't have the resource, hopefully, they can give us some major money back. We can using that and to give to all the nonprofit. All the time should go directly to the homeless, okay? And with the program to help them, mental health, okay? Drug, alcohol, abuse. So, okay, and if they are encampment, then we will find them housing with all these resource we consolidated together. So, this is my request.
Mr. Mayor? Yes, Councilman Contos?
In support of that, also, as that is put together, if information can also be provided about the, about the plan that has already been developed or any related documentation from 2019 so that those of us who either were not around and were not active then would be able to have a sense of context as to what has already been developed so we'll know what our baseline is now for us to continue building?
Yeah, and, and, and I mean, I do have a concern. It was mentioned in public comment. But I also know there were public record requests. And I personally requested to see the plan. And, you know, here we are over two weeks later. And there seems to be nothing, no records. Can you at least answer that question as, do we have records of, of the plan, of the organization, of funding? I know, you know, it's been, you know, spoken out loud about, you know, millions of dollars in funding. So, where's this coming from? I know we have the 2018 homeless, the 2018 homeless plan that is on the website, but that is not what Mayor Pro Tem Wu is speaking of. And so, can we have that presented? The 2019 initiative that he's talking about? That, that should be, there should have been some staff report, some presentation. I understand what he's asking now, which seems to be developing something different. But what Councilman Conto said, you know, we'd like to be presented with, well, what was created and what was told to the county at our last meeting that we had. We said we had a plan. Folks have been asking to see this. We have not been able to see it. So, I guess if you could answer, has staff been able to locate the plan?
Excuse me? I have the. City Attorney, I have a motion. I request, the request, they can either vote on it, okay? And then he can move on his next. I have my motion request, and if he wanted.
Point of order.
He can do his own.
Mr. Mayor, we have a motion and a second for this mother may.
And then we had a, we can have discussion.
Then we can have.
We can have discussion.
And I want to have a vote on that.
Vote on the mother may, I about bringing this back at the next meeting.
Correct, correct.
Okay, so I need some clarification. What exactly are we bringing back? What was their request? Was the request to bring back 2019?
I request, Mr. Mayor, I request to reactivate 2019. We approved the West Covina Homeless Initiative, okay? I think it's on the record, okay? I think Mark Prisco, that time, is Assistant City Manager, okay? So, and we, right now, we want to add with, due to the, okay? Some other entity want to join. So, that's why I request to have that, okay? So, this is my request. And I think I have a second from the support. And we just vote on it.
Okay, I'd like to just add an amendment that we get a presentation of the 2019 plan that was created.
If the maker of the motion is okay with that amendment, then.
No, I want to all add together and including that, what we have in 2019 and what we going to have. Because I want to add what is the systematic, we can have a homeless initiative in the 2024, 2024. That's what I request. So, we can have this plan, okay, to send to the, make it work and send to the county to ask for funding. But more important thing, we need to have, okay, add this active what we have back in 2019. So, so while then talking about this and that, we want to have some action, right? If people want to help the homeless, that's what I request. Action plan that can be done for the homeless, okay? It's not about the history. It's about what we can do for the homeless. While West Covina, we consolidate with all the nonprofit group. So, in that way, we can consolidate with them, and they are willing to help. So, this is a request, same thing like what back in 2019, but just reactivate because we haven't done anything for this. we haven't done anything for these couple of years.
Okay, that's the motion, let's vote on that motion.
Okay.
You need to do another mother may after, you make, you can do another mother may.
Okay, roll call.
I have a motion by Mayor Pro Tem and a second by Councilwoman Diaz.
No.
Councilman Cantos?
Aye.
Councilwoman Diaz?
Aye.
Councilwoman Lopez Viado?
Aye.
Mayor Pro Tem Wu?
Aye.
Mayor Calderon Tabatzai?
No.
Item passes 4-1, Mayor.
Mr. Mayor?
I actually, Mayor Pro Tem, will you?
I'm talking.
Okay, I thought you had more than one. Councilman Cantos?
I'd like to do a mother may I to ask that, that the staff provide us with the 2019 information so that we can, the public can see it and so that we will also know, be able to help prevent from reinventing the wheel in building on the, the previous mother may I as we look forward to the future.
Second.
I have a motion by Councilman Cantos, a second by Mayor Pro Tem, excuse me, by Mayor Calderon Tabatzai for the 2019 plan. Councilman Cantos?
Aye.
Councilwoman Diaz?
Aye.
Councilwoman Lopez Viado?
Sounds like the same thing, but aye, okay?
Aye, okay.
Mayor Pro Tem Wu?
Aye.
And Mayor Calderon Tabatzai?
Aye.
Item passes 5-0, Mayor.
All right, are there any other? Yes, Councilwoman Diaz.
Thank you, Mayor. My mother may I is, you know, during our Fourth of July event, I was thinking about how we had over 5,000 people there, I believe, and how we use Azusa Avenue as a major corridor. And I just want to know if we can have staff start working on Azusa Avenue to make it look nicer, like work on our suckers that are coming out of the tree wells and our sidewalks are breaking and we're not getting those fixed. I'm wondering when we're going to get those fixed right on Azusa between, what is it? Walnut Creek Parkway and Cameron. And also we get some lights to be put up on the medians and make sure that we maintain our medians, because I know that they've been working on them and they do look a little better, but I just think that we, I just hope that we can maintain them so that we can have a better presentation of our city. One of the medians doesn't have the agapanthus flower that is our city flower. We have some areas that maybe can use, maybe some, like La Puente has a wall where they, they hide the chain link fences and they put ivy and, and it kind of covers the sides of the sidewalk and it just looks nice and presentable. So I'm just wondering if staff can do that, to work on that, work on our Azusa corridor so that it looks nicer, more presentable.
Mayor Pro Tem?
I will second, okay, I think it's, okay, Azusa Avenue is our, okay, basic kind of landmark from the north and south, okay? And I think, okay, that need to rehab and to show, okay, the how beautiful West Covina is. So I, I will second that this area, the street, really need some tender loving care, okay? And really, right now it looks pretty sad, okay? And, and I think light too, right? Okay, yeah, including the, the light, we've been talking couple of years already. So right now it's like some lights on, some lights not there, okay? So we need to consistent with the light and then it's holiday season coming up pretty soon, okay? One year go by so fast, so, but hopefully we can have some kind of seasonal lighting. We've been request for so, so many years. So hopefully, a city can look into a potential budget to rehab the Azusa Avenue from, okay, north and south. And I, I want to add, okay, if you can, we've been asking for Azusa synchronization, synchronization traffic signal, see, okay, what is the status from our great Nambalitona Federal, like three million or seven million dollars, okay, adding to, okay, rehab Azusa with ADA and including the other beautification and sidewalk so people is walkable, okay? I will second.
I have, oh, sorry.
Councilwoman Diaz?
Thank you, Mayor. I don't know if I should add this to my mother may I as far as maintenance, but one of the items too that I've also brought up before is that we need to maintain our streets, the, the striping of our streets on workmen, you can't even see them. I mean, that's a safety issue. You know, you can have cars that can't even see, you know, where the lines are at, and that's all over our city. So that's another thing I want to bring up. Maybe we can get a grant for that because it's a safety issue. Thank you.
I have a motion by Councilwoman Diaz, a second by Mayor Pro Tem Wu to work on the beautification of the Azusa corridor, check into the traffic signal synchronization and to work on the striping, particularly workmen. Councilman Cantos?
Aye, and I agree, I don't see the stripes.
Councilwoman Diaz?
Aye.
Councilwoman Lopez Viado?
Aye.
Mayor Pro Tem Wu?
Aye, we give you the beep.
Mayor Calderon Tabatzai?
Aye.
Item passes 5-0, Mayor.
Okay, Mayor Pro Tem Wu?
I just, since we talked about the street, I did just look into potential, I think we talked about this last year, on the our south side, Valley Boulevard, right next to, okay, Warner, okay, and to, I think, La Puente and that, that section is belong to West Covina, it look really bad, okay? And that it should be represent West Covina, a lot of residents complaining about, you go to Warner, look nice, but when you hit West Covina, then that section, okay, and it's all concrete and then you have a we going up. So I don't know, we, do we have a budget to look into beautification for Valley? Valley is a big street, okay? It's major artery too, okay? See, we can using the gas money or, okay, our restricted fund to look into potentially, see we have a budget for that to beautify that, that street. That's my mother may I.
I'll second it.
I have a motion by Mayor Pro Tem Wu, a second by Councilwoman Diaz to look into the beautification of Valley Boulevard. Councilman Cantos?
Aye.
Councilwoman Diaz?
Aye.
Councilwoman Lopez Viado?
Aye.
Mayor Pro Tem Wu?
Aye.
Mayor Calderon Tabatzai?
Aye.
Item passes 5-0, Mayor.
Okay, well, I, I guess I have one, one request and just one update. Since we're all asking for beautifications of major streets, I would like a mother may I to look into the beautification of Sunset, which obviously was at Portos just yesterday, and it is beyond crowded during the summer, especially during lunchtime. But Sunset Boulevard is, is also one of those major streets, so if we could also look into the beautification and maintenance of Sunset.
Second.
I have a motion by Mayor Calderon Tabatzai, a second by Mayor Pro Tem Wu for the beautification of Sunset Avenue. Councilman Cantos?
Aye.
Councilwoman Diaz?
Aye.
Councilwoman Lopez Viado?
Aye.
Mayor Pro Tem Wu?
Aye.
Mayor Calderon Tabatzai?
Aye.
Item passes 5-0, Mayor.
Okay.
I request our condition should walk in our chamber, I cannot wear my, I cannot even breathe, okay? And my back hurt like hell and I have no air.
Sometimes it's freezing.
Yeah, I know, this is, okay, so my request is make sure?
City Attorney and Roberts rules of order, when conditions are poor, it's a point of, what, what is the ask? Oh. I, I know there is, there is a certain ask for that. So, Councilwoman Diaz, did you have a?
I just have a little sarcasm. I'm really looking forward to seeing our West Covina look so beautiful after all these mother may Is, my lord, it's beautiful. In the perfect world, I'm going to be following up.
Definitely. And, and as, as a follow up, we did have a, a great ESPN Friday night All-Star, you know, the folks there had, had a wonderful time, but there, there were a few comments where, where folks did ask, you know, why is your, why is there no rush, why can't I buy beer is really what they asked, right? Why, why were there no pictures of beer? But the other, the other thing, and, and this has been a concern, and I know we're going to be getting an update, so I want to know when we're going to get that presentation is, from Memorial Day to Labor Day, the sportsplex should not be available. It should be fully booked with teams across the nation during the travel ball season. Every other sportsplex, and, and, and it really shouldn't be teams from California, because I, being in the travel ball, all our California teams are going across the country, going to Maryland, going to Arizona, going to New York, going all across the country to play, and we should be hosting teams from Tennessee, from Maryland, from, and so ESPN really shouldn't be able to book us on a, on a Friday night in July, because it should be filled with tournaments from eight in the morning to 10 o'clock at night. Our hotels should be filled, our laser tag, all, all those supplemental businesses, I see Bun Street is here, they should be filled with, with baseball and softball teams. So I, I know we, we wanted to give our, our new director some time to study, so I wanted to know what, what date should we expect the, the presentation on the sportsplex?
Okay, so our new deputy director of community services has been on board not even a month, so if we can bring it probably back in September for council presentation?
Mayor Pro Tem comment?
And finally, I agree with you something, I agree with you, okay? I, I think, I think with this is such a beautiful sportsplex, so pretty, and I want to say thank you for all the, our maintenance crew, okay, and make this, the field is so, okay, professional, and I think ESPN, all the All-Star people are just say magnificent field, and we just say, hey, come to book this place once a month rather than once a year. But my point is this, I agree 100%. This is beautiful six ballpark, and we've been begging to people to book, okay, we really need, okay, and it's, it's really needed, okay? Beautiful six field to be let the, not only the our city, but also the traveling ball league, ball, okay, to, to utilize this place. And I think we can make this place really busy and, and it will be not only balance, I think city will make money, okay? And why we negative vacant and always like not using, and this is a disappointment from all the city council, including we are highly support the using the sportsplex, but if you saw sportsplex 50% of time is vacant, it's make everybody's like waste of the money over there. So, so this really fully used, okay, I 100% agree, okay? Sometime we have agreement, disagreement, but this I agree, we need to, we be asking is about time. And second thing is about restaurant, okay? Need, that restaurant need to be open, okay? Rather than waiting, waiting, and like to get the plan, you have Assistant City Manager, City Manager, you have a lot of staff, okay? And they've been with us for a while, let's look into what we can book the place and put the promotion and have all the ballpark to come to West Covina to play ball, okay? And we ready, and we just pay us fee, okay? So we can pay our staff. So, so I agree, okay? I think hopefully September, we can get some kind of presentation and including, okay, how to, okay, contract our two restaurant and the battery issue, how can we fix the place? But other than that, it's really a beautiful, okay, field, okay, and the sportsplex, and we very proud. I just say, during the ESPN on the radio, I say, okay, Pasadena has a rose ball, but it's old and sad, but West Covina has a beautiful sportsplex that we welcome everybody to come to play. So we need to promote and hopefully we book entire six plate, six field for people to really happy to utilize.
Mr. Mayor?
Councilman Cantos?
In support of our united front with, with the mayor and Mayor Pro Tem, I'd like to ask formally that, that this item be agendized for this, by the second meeting of, of September 2024, to have a formal report, including with action plans and next timelines regarding moving forward as described by, by my colleagues.
Second.
Yeah, it's no objection. Thank you.
Okay, so just, I have a couple more things I have to say. Yes, this Saturday, the family hike, I don't know if it was the city manager report, but Cortez Park, check-ins at 7:30, our community and senior services commission is really trying to bring the community together, make us healthy. So Cortez Park, we have family hike on Saturday, check-ins at 7:30. And finally, last thing I'll say is, our next council meeting is not until the third week in August, and I will not be here for that meeting. For full disclosure, I will be in Chicago as a delegate for the Democratic National Convention, and so if you tune in and you do not see me and you don't get the, the usual Mayor, Mayor Pro Tem show, I understand. But I am sure the Mayor Pro Tem will, will be able, he has much experience.
I will fight with myself.
So, you know, I, I may email then a public comment so you can have someone to speak to. All right, so having said that, the meeting is now adjourned.